Thank you very much, Jeff. All right. It is 7:01 on October 7, 2021. Welcome to the Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. No further ado, I'd like to ask the town administrators to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we will amend or approve the agenda and then a period of public comment. Item number one is a consent agenda containing three items with payroll warrants, draft minutes of September 9, 21, and next meeting dates of October 21, 2021, November 4 and November 18. Item two is consideration of new beer and wine license, art specialties to expire December 31, 2021. Item three, consideration of ARPA funding requests, Deb Seifring interim finance director. Item four, updated financial policy, Heidi Doyle treasurer. Item five, consideration of appointment to the agricultural commission, Mark Russell Williams for a term to expire June 15, 2023, and Richard Robinson for a term to expire June 15, 2023. Item six, consideration of approval, new annual appointment process. Item seven, update on town hall space needs. Number eight, consideration of routine business with select board and town administrator. And then adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions. Item one, meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444, year 2007, to discuss 31 Hunting Lane and Igor Labarski at LV Town of Sherburne Land Court Action Number 21 MISC PS Number 000193 Speicher. Item two is to meet with town council and the chair of the Conservation Commission to discuss a complaint letter dated August 16, 2021 from Jonathan Hodgson Walker and Lisa Hodgson Walker of Silverwood Farm LLC against the Conservation Commission pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 1, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444, year 2007. Item three, to discuss strategies respect to threatened potential litigation. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town, and the chair does so declare, to discuss the town library pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 38, 30A, Section 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444, year 2007. Item four, review of executive session minutes from 2020 pursuant to GL, Chapter 38, Sections 21A, 3, and 22G, and review of September 23, 2021 executive session minutes for consideration of release, and then adjourn back to open sessions to adjourn from open session for the night. There's one item that was asked, item number six, to be rescheduled to another night because Ms. Relus can't make it this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, David. All right. Do I have any motions or comments relative to the agenda, please?
So I'd move to approve the agenda, but delete item six to accommodate Vicki.
Second, second. Okay, motion in a second. Let's see, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann? I red lips. Paul?
You're muted, Marion.
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay, I might as well. Very good. Okay, no public comment. Is that correct, Diane and David? Okay, okay. So moving on, consent agenda. Do I have any motions or comments relative to consent agenda, please?
Move approval.
Okay, so move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. Okay, first item on our first sniffing item, agenda number two, consideration of new beer and wine license, art specialties to expire December 31, 2021. I'm assuming, Jeannie, is this yours?
I am here. I'm in Buffalo, but I'm here.
Thanks, Jeannie.
This is amazing. I don't know if I've ever heard about this Zoom thing, but okay.
This is the license that you approved last May, this past May, and it was approved by the the ABCC. He is doing his, he's gonna try it open November 1st, but because I didn't know meeting schedule, we thought we would get it on this agenda. And then when he gets his food establishment permit from the Board of Health and finishes up a couple of things with Chris, he can open and then he'll have his license ready to go. I'll hold it until that happens.
Good question. If we approved it, why don't we approve it again?
You approved, you approved the okay for him to go to the ABCC with it.
Oh, okay.
So this is just the the annual license that you approve every year, and you're gonna have to do it again at the end of December for everybody.
Got it. I just wouldn't know that. I didn't realize we had only approved him going to ABC before.
Right. Because he hadn't, he hadn't gotten the approval from the ABCC yet.
Got it. So after we vote in affirmative, how long do we have to sign it? We have to come in.
You can sign it next week. You can have David sign it. And then he will be up again at the end of December.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or motions relative to the liquor license?
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, do we want to modify the move to have David sign it to include having David sign it?
Sure, yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I'm also high. I'm glad to hear he's targeting for November 1. I think holiday season will be very for, you know, what what he showed us, what job's gonna be like.
Yeah, it's gonna be good. So, all right, I'm going back to my family. See you guys later.
Joy, thank you.
Bye.
Don't start rooting for the Bills, though.
All right, number three, consideration of ARPA funding request, Deb Seifring interim finance director.
Yes, good evening. So what we have here are five different charges that of expenses that we've already incurred. And currently they're sitting in the operating budget. And this request from each of the individual departments is to move it from the operating budget to the ARPA expense account. I think everybody that has something for consideration is here, so I will let them go ahead and discuss what they submitted. I think first is Board of Health. Daryl?
Daryl, you there?
Yes, I am there. And are you going to be showing it or should I just talk about it?
I don't have the capability to show my screen, so you can just talk about it.
All right, excellent. So we're asking for two things. The expenses have already been incurred as Deb mentioned. I don't remember the exact amounts. I don't have them in front of me. Something like a thousand and then.
I have both of them, Daryl, if you want.
Excellent.
The one was the wall, wall pole visiting nurses for
Yes.
$1,512.50. And the other is Board of Health Administrator overtime at $7,319.70.
Okay, good. So the Visiting Nurse Association is something that the town has a contract with these visiting nurses. They have provided infectious disease services for years to decades to the town. Normally, we have them on contract for a relatively low level, but of course, in the past year and two thirds, it's very busy working for the town. And so we've had, we've incurred extra expenses with them, although I think we were hitting highs of around maybe $6,000 a month. I don't have all those numbers in front of me, but something like that. So we're much lower now. Also, the state program, the Contact Tracing Collaborative has also pitched in, and that doesn't cost us anything for the town. But there are some things that we do like with the visiting nurses can offer in terms of their connection, deeper connection with the people that they're speaking with and understanding of the community, and and sometimes even the individuals. So in any case, we've paid them and we'd like to use ARPA funds for that. And then the other is overtime for our health administrator. And these are hours that are all documented and pertain to COVID.
Okay, this is clearly up here, I believe, the total public health support is $12,125.
Well, that's, yeah, that's for ARPA. The other three, one is COA.
Yep.
No, this is one of Zoom and one is the financial consultant.
Yep, no, I was just speaking strictly on to Daryl.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
No, I would move that we approve these operating expenses totaling $12,125.8.
So Deb, I'm assuming we can approve the entire package at the end, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I think we should know. You can, these were already approved by advisory this week, weren't they?
Yes, they were approved nine to zero with by advisory last evening.
Yep.
Jeff, before you make a motion to approve it, can I find out what the consultant fees are?
Sure. The consultant fee is the fee that we pay to Clifton Larson Allen, who I use to review all the ARPA requests prior to, you know, moving on with them. And they also helped complete the last CARES package, the reconciliation package from the CARES Act back in 2020.
Good.
We want to talk about, I mean, if you're gonna do this in order, council. And then, and then David Williams is after that. So is anyone who wants to speak from the council aging, want to speak on their submission?
Yes, it's self-evident.
Hi. Hi, it's Sue. So this is for the last set of meals that we had home delivered from July through mid-September. We started out on the beginning of the pandemic with three meals a week, and then we went down to two. Then we did a grab and go with and delivery, and these were the last group of home-delivered meals that we are putting a request in that was covered. The other meals were covered by the CARES Act and the other ARPA money. So we're just requesting to be reimbursed for the 14, 46, 45.
Okay, any questions on the board?
I have a question. Do you intend to continue providing meals at that, at that, in those numbers? And do you intend to use more ARPA funds next quarter or?
No, we, what we do now is we've resumed our senior cafe, and we try to order extra each week to deliver, to include the people that we would deliver into. So we will not use any, we won't be requesting more ARPA funds.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, that's, that's, that's a good question, Marion, and I guess that's the same question for Daryl. Do you expect the administrators' overtime hours to continue at this level for for a period of time?
Yes, at some level. I don't know if it'll be this level. We are always hoping that things will taper off. But they seem to keep happening. So where it's new and different things that we're dealing with, so.
Okay, so if there's no more on that one, David, do you want to speak on the Zoom charges?
Yes, the Zoom charges were paid out of the CARES Act routinely as we incurred them. And this is for, I believe this is three months of Zoom charges. And we can bring it back to quarterly, or we can hold it off till the end of the year. But it will likely be budgeted into operations for next year.
It makes sense. It does make sense. I think in some fashion or another, you know, we've made a comment with Jeannie coming in from Buffalo. I agree with George, where I don't know if we want to make long-term these meetings live, but some kind of hybrid technology like we've spoken about. Yep. Be associated with that. All right, now Deb, did you want to say anything more about the consultancy? Are there any questions for David on the Zoom? And Deb, did you want to say anything more about the consultant charges?
Not, not really. I mean, that's, that's what we use over just to help with all the ARPA request, make sure that it's done correctly, so we don't have any issues down the road.
Okay, so any, any global questions on the board or any motions relative to this application to ARPA funds?
So move to approve.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Moving on, updated financial policy, Heidi Doyle.
Well, wait a second. Are we not approving? See, we approve the operating expenses, but do we need to approve the other ARPA capital requests or those already approved?
Already.
Capital requests.
The ones like the Leland Water Project.
Already done.
Those are already done.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, I see it in the right-hand column. My apologies.
Yep, okay. Okay. All that, Heidi, the floor is yours on the financial.
Thank you. So I'm trying to take this time before we start budget season to maybe get a few housekeeping items. My goal is to try and maintain our AAA budget with standard and poor and control some of the areas that we can control. And one of the areas has been, we've always been asked if we have formal approved policies and financial policies was one of the areas. And I actually found in 2012, the town actually did approve a financial policy, and Paul was the only one on the board at that time that was involved with approving it. So I've looked at it, and I've been working with advisory, and they had spent some time on it last year, and we finally got to coming up with a model they approved, which is updating that one. And the reserve policy had been mentioned within the initial draft one. And I'd like to pull that out and there's a separate financial reserve policy. So I'm presenting two policies that advisory has gone through, vetted and approved. So you would have the reserve policy as well as the fiscal guidance policies. And I'm hoping there's been time to look at it. And any comments?
I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what is? I've always had ambivalent feelings about the way we're treating free cash because there's two ways to look at it. One way to look at it is that is that we are over budgeting and we're over taxing our citizens regularly, like at 5%. And 5% on a, let's say, $20 million budget is a million dollars, isn't it? And therefore, one way to look at it is that if we're essentially overtaxing people, then we should use it to reduce the tax rate. The other way to look at it is that the free cash number is sort of a random thing that just happens because of good management and effective leadership. And so it's, it's, it's something you can't, you can't plan on on a regular basis. But the way the the policy reads, the free cash is used is very, very limited, and there's nothing in there about supporting or reducing the tax rate. So I think it's a little too restrictive, given that we always have pretty healthy free cash number each year. That suggests that we're closer to the viewpoint that we're we're maybe budgeting a little bit too much. And therefore, we're taxing a little bit too much, especially given how high our tax rate is. So I would like to see the ability to use free cash to reduce the tax rate as as an option. Another comment is under the audit section, section C says that reports used to prepare the audit would be made available to the Board of Select. I don't recall seeing those, and that is carried forward from the financial policies we adopted in 2012. And I don't, again, don't recall seeing those reports on a, on a regular basis. So I support the, the idea that the select board should have those, those reports that are given to the auditors. I'm just not sure that it's been implemented fully. So I would like to see that that implemented. Then the, the debt limitation not to exceed 10% strikes me as not being realistic. I mean, it's one thing if we're talking about buying cruisers. But if we're like rebuilding the regional schools, and we have to spend, let's say, $100 million to say that we can't borrow money because it may be more than 10%, just isn't, isn't consistent with with today's real world. So I don't know how we got to the 10% number. Again, if we're talking about small purchases, that's, that's one thing. But every once in a while, we have to do some pretty big projects. So those are my comments on the.
I guess, Deb, do you have any thoughts? I meant, I meant, actually, go ahead, George.
Um, I think this was well done. Good work, Heidi. I think you've done a great job with this. I do have to disagree with Paul on the free cash used for operating. We talked about that extensively, Jeff. I'm sure you remember.
You beat me to the switch when I raised your hand.
What you're, what you're doing is falsely dropping tax rate for one year when you do that. Because next year, those budgets are gonna come in, and all of a sudden, that you you put yourself at risk of having a large jump in the tax rate the following year if you use free cash for operating expenses. What you need to be doing is fixing your budget, so you don't need free cash or and lowering the tax rate. The only way to lower the tax rate, I said to you this 100 times, Paul, is not to spend money. It's not to play around with free cash or this or that. It's, it's to rein in the actual operating expenses, not where you pay for the operating expenses from. So I think, I think this is a prudent financial policy to not use free cash for operating expenses.
Well, I think it's actually, I forget the exact wording. I think the way Paul described is, it's, you described it as not using it for tax reduction, I think. Is that what?
But yeah, it says, it says in the policy, free cash may be used for supplementals, but not fulfilling deficits in the operating budget. And I think that.
You agree with that? You cut out there. You agree with that? George?
Well, I cut out, I'm sorry, I said, I said it should be, it says not fulfilling deficits in the operating budget.
And do you agree with that statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I support George on this, too. We had a, the mantra of advisory is free cash isn't free, and it isn't cash. So, but Paul's right, though. The thing that we've done, Paul, is that there were usually, you know, we have, when we look at what we can raise, you know, the tax levy too, we haven't been going to that full amount. So every year, they allocate some of the budget to pay for, you know, costs, retirement costs that we've talked about before. Also have, I think, and Stephen's on here, I, we put $100,000 a year, I think, towards the tax rate, I think. So do you want to correct everything I missed said, Stephen?
Stephen, you here?
Or Darth Vader, whoever's there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I think what, what you said is correct, and I think certainly basically what you and George are saying about free cash and the tax rate are, are all pretty, pretty accurate to how advisory approaches things. I don't remember offhand that every year we use a specific number towards tax reduction in the budget, but, but yes, that is usually also built into the budget somehow. And, you know, I think part of the, part of the thinking is that specifically one thing that S and P had pointed out in terms of the town's sort of financial position in the last couple of years that they audited was specifically not using free cash to lower the tax rate that, you know, I think we had done that in one way or another, and they kind of gave us a red flag on that. So we're, we're trying pretty hard right now to avoid using free cash to lower the tax rate or any sort of convolution thereof.
We've also, and you can elaborate on this, is sort of greatly reduced using it for capital also because we ended up, that's the part of it not being cash. We didn't, we didn't have the funds, even though we could use free cash. We didn't have the cash in the bank to pay for large capital expenditures that we funded with the free cash vehicle. So we pretty much, we're bonding anything that's major.
And my, I guess my comment would be, these are guidelines. We're saying that this is a fiscal policy guideline. So all the things Paul's mentioning, if a school comes up, I think that we can deviate from what we're voting on. If we vote on this, it's not saying that you can't do something. It's just, these are the preferred methods to follow. So subsequent treasurers, subsequent advisory people, everyone will have something that they could aim to follow.
Okay.
I agree. I support this. I think, I think it's well-written. I think we should, we should adopt it.
Well, Paul's other revisions, I thought, sounded sensible, though, the ones subject to the, I forget. Other than the free cash, you had two or three other ones, Paul.
The debt ceiling is what Heidi just said. Like, we, we can make options for large items like schools, but I think it's a smart, prudent idea of to kind of cap debt. So we're not overspending. I think that's, that's the whole point of reducing the tax rate. Is that there's, let's have mechanisms in there that limit how much we spend unless we decide to make an exception for something big like a school.
And raising the debt ceiling.
Outside of policy.
I'll say raising a debt ceiling has no parallel in national news right now either. All right, one question about that. So is there a mechanism that actually says, like, this town meeting, do it? Does a vote of the select board do it? How does, how, how do we raise it above 10%?
Since this was just a guideline, this is something that would be determined basically between advisory when they're talking budget seasons. You know, that people could just make a note, our policy is for this. However, in this case, we're going. I don't think you need any formal vote to go over this policy. This isn't meant to be a bylaw that you need to vote.
Okay, just that's a policy.
Yeah, right, right now, we've been following this informally, and one thing Standard and Poor has said, they wanted something in writing. They want to see this consistency that can go from one person to the next person, that there's some type of a paper trail to follow on what the town's vision is. And so it's not meant to be anything you get penalized, oh, we didn't follow this section. But it's just kind of to get everyone on the same page that we'd like to try and work on a united front on, on financial issues.
All right, is there any discussion about, you know, Paul's comments or any new comments or questions relative to the policy?
I'll just supplement.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I should have made it clear that I support the policies. They're basically policies I have previously voted on back in 2012 with some, some tweaks. Again, my comment about free cash is that if every year we have a million dollars in free cash out of a, let's say, a $20 million budget, that to me tells me that we're setting our budgets a million dollars higher, and we're imposing that on the taxpayers. And then to not use it and just to put it into reserves, to not use it to reduce the tax rate, basically compounds the problem by each year, if you accumulate a million dollars a year. compounds the problem by each year, if you accumulate a million dollars a year and have very limited uses that you can spend it on. At the end of the day, the taxpayers are paying more than they need to. That was my point. And that's the George's point, to spend less money. That's exactly my point. If if we appropriate 20 million, knowing that a million we'd expect to be in free cash, then only appropriate 19 million. And and tailor your expenditures to what you really need and not build into it the fact that you're going to want to get free cash in the 5% range or up to the 5% range. Because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers, all of us who are paying that extra 5%, so we have this free cash. That's that was my point about the free cash and the point about using it to offset the tax rate. Because if you're increasing the tax rate by 5% in order to get this free cash and you don't want to not do that, then use the the 5% to reduce the tax rate to bring you back to where you would be if the numbers were closer to what your actual needs are.
Okay, so George, oh, sorry. No, no, sorry. I thought you were done, Paul.
Just just one clarifying.
Yeah.
Saying about free cash, the DOR recommends that you maintain 3% to 5% free cash. So we kind of got to follow our state regulations. We can't just spend it all every year. We, it's prudent fiscal policy to maintain 3% to 5% of free cash.
Yep, Mary Ann.
My comment was just that if 5% is considered to be too much in the next budget year, as we budget, we have a slightly different goal. And you might decide that it's 3% next year. See how that works. If that works well, you know, 2% the following or something like that, at least kind of set a bar for next year's budgetary process. So people kind of know what's coming.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make something a little more clear that, but we don't budget that we're going to have free cash. We don't budget contingency. What happens is we do, we leave 3% to 5% in free cash. And anything above that, we use for maybe capital or we've used it for supplementals, that kind of thing. But it's not like we're taxing that extra. I think it's kind of misleading to say we're taxing to get that extra million dollars because.
That's kind of how it sounded, so.
Yeah, in the corporate world, free cash is called retained earnings. It's not called free cash. It basically means that Paul's right. It means we didn't, we over budgeted the prior year. So Paul's right about that part. Two things I'll say about that, we work hard not to over budget. So the real way, which George said earlier, is to budget better. But I think we need to be a little aware, like with COVID, we've had a lot of costs that didn't materialize because buildings weren't open and services weren't being offered the same way. And they're not even serving lunch at Pine Hill or whatever last year. So this last 18 months has been a little bit weird that way. And we had costs that we would normally incur that were reimbursed by the CARES Act and now ARPA. So I think that the monies that have come back from free cash in the last 18 months are probably atypical a little bit. But but the answer is to, I think we're in violent agreement. Basically, the answer is to budget properly and, you know, then you won't have free cash come through the next year because you you underspent the budget.
Okay, it does sound like in a circular fashion that we're somewhat agreeing with each other on the most part here. Someone corrects on me. So I know, you know, Jeff and George, you're the financial whizzes on the board, and I'm probably the least financial whiz on the board. If free cash doesn't get spent, then does it automatically essentially just not have to get taxed the next year? Do you know what I'm trying to say? Like, is it cash in the bank or is it basically potential money? You know what I mean? So essentially, if it doesn't get spent, it essentially automatically lowers next year's tax bill. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, but it's not money. It's not cash. It's a, it's a, it's a balance sheet item. But it's not cash. It's on the liability side. But but you know, it's not money that you can spend. That's that's really the way to explain it. You're allowed, you're allowed to allocate those funds using free cash instead of a budgetary, but but it's not money you have in the bank.
I'm more wondering, like, so if it doesn't get spent, then essentially the tax rate goes down, correct? If you, I know you spend 100,000 out of a million, 900,000 essentially goes back into, um.
I think you've got it opposite, Eric. If you, if you spend it, if you use free cash, the tax rate goes down. If you don't spend it, the free cash continues to sit there and you have to raise that revenue through tax, through tax, like you can't. The only way to pay all our expenses are either through taxes or this free cash or or revenue we get from the state. So that's, those are our three revenue sources for the most part. I think there's.
But they look at the tax rate, advisory starts with the tax rate, which what they refer to as the growth number. So they start with the tax rate, you know, and then we look at that and try not to spend the maximum amount we're allowed to under Prop 2 and 1/2. And and that includes funding pensions and things like that. And then they arrive at a budget that doesn't use the full increase in tax that we would be allowed under Prop 2 and 1/2. So I think, I think Stephen's putting his son to bed, so he can't fix me here right now. But.
You're right, Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, that explains something. All right. So are there any more questions, comments relative to the policies set forth before us?
I would make a motion to adopt these policies.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, I didn't think we asked all questions. Let's see. So all in favor, Jeff? Jeff, you're seconded. So, okay, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Yeah, Jeff, I don't think your wifi is as good versus when you're in front of your sunroom.
Well, I know. I got flags now, though.
I just want to say thank you, Heidi. You did a great job with this.
Well, thanks for advisory.
Deb, I think Deb probably helped you in the advisory, so that's great.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Heidi. Okay, so moving on, agenda item number five, consideration of appointment to the Agricultural Commission. We have Mark Russell Williams, with a term to expire June 15, 2023, and Richard Robinson, for a term to expire June 15, also 2023.
Yep.
Just a point I want to, what about the reserve policy?
The what?
Were there two policies?
Oh.
Sorry, I thought when they made the motion, they said to accept the policies plural, so I didn't catch.
Do you want to take a second vote? We can.
I thought it was fiscal policies is what I said.
Yeah, I said, but it'd be, I think Paul's correct. The better way to be to reserve policy would have a separate vote.
I'm finding either way, whatever, if someone wants to make a motion relative to it, to a second policy as well, or to name it outright, or simply clarify its policies, I'm finding the one.
I'll move that we approve the reserve policy as well.
Well, I have a comment about it.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
It's about the use of stabilization, the saying the criteria is what's, you know, more advantageous to the town versus borrowing. And my, my concern is that the criteria I like to use for borrowing is, is it something that should be paid for by future residents because it's an asset that's going to go on for a long period of time? Not what, what's the quickest? Or what's the the cheapest? I think what's fair to the current taxpayers is that if they buy something that's good for 20 years and and some people move out of town and some people move into town, everybody who gets advantage of that asset should be allowed or should be part of the paying for. So I don't entirely agree with the statement that the issue is only what's most advantageous to the town. I think there's also an element of what's fairest to the taxpayers. So my thought was those words were missing there in the in the policy. Again, I should put this into context. I support the the reserve thing. I'm going to vote for whether or not these changes are made. I'm just saying from experience because these are only guidelines. I will be deviating in my own role here on some of these policies. And this is one of them that I think I think the consideration of that is is really spreading it out so that people who aren't even residents of the town today, they move into town, let's say, five years from now, they should not only have the benefit of the asset, but they should help pay for it.
So like what you're saying, like with a school, sometimes it's advantageous to pay, let's say, a higher percentage for a longer term, like to pay 4% over 30 years versus 3% over 20 years, something like that, for fairness?
It's even, I think to Paul, I'm putting words in your mouth, Paul, even you wouldn't want to pay for an asset with cash. Like, say, you bought a $900,000 fire engine and you couldn't pay for it with cash. You don't want to because you want the people who are going to use the fire engine for 30 years. So Paul's completely right about this.
I agree.
Yep.
Right. Yeah. What what's, what page are you on for that sentence, Paul?
I didn't print the thing out, so I'm just going up and it's it's stabilization number.
Yeah, I don't see that in a stabilization.
That's what I was going to ask was how the stabilization fund wording has anything to do with debt term and that kind of thing. I was a little confused about that.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
Was it in the main financial policy, not in the stabilization?
Heidi, it's Heidi, it's in the reserves policy and it's on page one where it says stabilization funds. And under the policies, there's a number one and number two.
Yeah.
And that's, there's number one and number three. And on number three, that very last line.
Okay, and that's like, which, yes, we'll change that to a number two. And then we'll is more advantageous for the town to pay capital projects from reserves or so the town finance director and treasurer will observe both the town's financial situation and the capital markets and advise the town as to whether it is more advantageous for the town to pay for capital projects from reserves or through borrowing. I guess I don't see how that's limiting.
Yeah, because it is vague. Avotations can be interpreted any different way. I think Paul's just talking about maybe using the word advantageous and fair or something like that. I'm not sure.
I'm talking about equity. Yeah, it's an equity concept. It's a let's not hit up the current taxpayers more than we have to if it's an asset that's going to go on for a long period of time. So it's not what's advantageous to the town as an institution. What's advantageous to the taxpayers?
Okay.
Essentially, both my comments on the first document and my comments on the second document are basically trying to make it better for the taxpayers. Just being as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the taxes I pay. And I would want to do, to use what Jeff said. We have a great opportunity to buy a fire truck for 900,000. And yet we can borrow it for 30 years. We may owe the 30-year period of time because we're paying interest and so on, pay more than the 900,000. But to hit up the current taxpayers for 900,000 means the current residents are paying for all of this. Whereas five years from now, 10 years from now, people are moving into town. They're getting the use of that fire truck and they're not paying for it.
I do think that Paul's, though, when you're reading the word advantageous, I think you're reading the narrow scope of like fiscal advantageous. Because it doesn't say what's more fiscally advantageous. Advantageous could mean, could include equity and fairness. I mean, if you wanted to add something like that there, I think, you know, the board would certainly be friendly to it. If you want to add a different word. But I think the word advantageous is so broad and vague that you could still fit your interpretation there still under this policy. So it doesn't say fiscally advantageous.
But it says advantageous to the town.
Right. So what if we just took that out and advised the town of the of the available options for paying? I mean, it's something, is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that makes sense, too.
Okay.
Because you do take into account the lifetime of the asset.
Right.
Yeah.
And then if we just talk about available options, we're not talking about saying one or the other.
Yeah.
Right. That works.
Okay.
No, I believe, do we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'll revise, I'll revise my motion to say adopt the reserve policy with the change that Heidi just mentioned in section now two of the stabilization fund policy to change it for advantageous to, what was it, Heidi?
Advising is the options available to the town to pay for capital projects.
There we go. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
I am also aye. Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number five, as previously read, consideration appointment to Agriculture Commission, Mark Russell William and Richard Robinson, both for terms to expire June 15, 2023. I see both are here. I don't know if you want to say anything or or we can just move on with the vote, whatever you prefer.
I have nothing interesting to say unless you have a question, then I'll.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I think we're lucky to have both.
Thanks for sending your your resumes. It's always interesting and impressive.
Absolutely.
Can I move to point both of them? I understand there to be alternates at this point.
I understand.
Both of them as alternatives for the terms specified in what you read.
That's what it sounds like.
I'll say, I think you moved. I'll second your motion, Paul.
Yep.
I just have to question the background material says, actually says, once a certain person decides to resign, and then blah, blah, blah. Anyways. Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And George?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Okay, now is it the next one skipping?
Thanks, Richard and Mark.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Thank you voluntarily.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so I think number six, that one's on hold. That one's going to get a push next week. So we're on to number seven. An update on the town hall space needs. I believe Sean was going to speak to this.
I am.
Do you want to share your screen? Or you want me to try?
I'm on two screens, so I might screw that up real quick. You want to share that? Do you have it, Jeff?
I don't have it open, but I have it. I'll have to go get it. You try. If you can't do it, you keep talking and I'll go get it. Eddie may have it too. I don't know, but I can go dig it up.
Got it here somewhere handy, too, if I can.
Do you?
Find it. I do. I've got it here somewhere.
It opened twice, so I'm making sure I got the right one. Let me try that.
Here, I've got it. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Sean.
I think I just did.
Oh, Sean is, yeah.
There you go. That's it. Good job.
Oh, mine looks better, Sean.
You want yours?
Yeah, really, really, really. No, but yours is tiny.
You need to zoom in a little bit, I think.
Oh, it's because it went to my other screen.
That's the way.
Take Mary's.
It approved that way because you can't read it.
I want you to be able to read it.
If you want to quit sharing, Sean, I'll open mine. I'll share mine.
All right.
It's ready to go.
You can zoom it on your screen, each individual.
I know, but I ended up on two different screens. No one ever lets me do this.
Sean, if you want it.
Yeah, please do. I can't, I can't get it to unshare.
You gotta quit sharing your screen, though, first. You gotta stop share.
Click share.
There it is. I'm sorry. Why didn't you say it was at the top?
Okay, here we go. There you go. Isn't that better?
Well, it's really big. Now everyone can read it.
Yes.
Right.
That's a drawback.
All right, so a couple of things. For some background, everybody has had the opportunity. If you haven't, I'm sorry, but the basement, you know, everyone knows the museum has left the basement. So since then, we've re-carpeted the entire area. We painted, we're in the process of painting the ceiling in one area. We've gone through the heating. We've gone through the heating, we've gone through the air. So it's it's basically a new area downstairs. Um, it's very clean, it's nice, it's bright. And it's empty. So the intent is to see how we're gonna use it. We. We obviously had the goal. Many years ago to get the weight out of the second story of that building. It's an antique building, it should not have large files upstairs. And it does, so. The goal originally was to do that. The best place to put heavy files is in the basement, it's a concrete floor. It's also an easy access for a lot of traffic. The back door to the town hall is kind of a. Forgotten gem, but it's it's um. It's it's a very good way in and out of the building. It it leads you right to the elevator, there's an access right into this office, which used to be. The museum. So what we did is we we compared in left and right column, the current gives you. All of the uses now. As you walk in, if you walk in the ground floor, you go around the corner, you find a COA office and then there's a small conference room. Which isn't used that much, but it was being used by COA, formerly used by um, the cemetery commission. And then, of course, what is now three empty rooms, which was uh, historic society. And then, we all know on the main level, you have the assessors, select board, building department. Can you scroll down, Marian? Collector's treasure and and town clerk, none of the, in my proposal, nothing on the fir- on the main level is gonna change. Substantially, and then the second floor, we all know of um. It it's left side, if you come off the elevator, but right side of the building, the finance department. Then. The whole rest of the corner is conservation planning and border health. That's where all the weight is. And that's where there's a lot of people working in a in an office that's not laid out all that well because of the amount of files that are in there. It's a decent sized space, but. It's fifty percent files. So if you want to scroll back up to the top, you can see what we what we're proposing to change. Is we take basically that upper corner office. And move them two floors below. So downstairs, you'll have conservation planning, border health, building department. All in what was the museum and the two rooms behind it. There's a, if if nobody's ever been in there. After you leave the big room, there's another room, it's well lit, it has two uh, pretty good sized windows. There's a third room. That it that has no windows, it can only really be used for storage. It could have been a small conference room, but. Um, it makes a great place for file storage. And anyone that's seen the border health and building department knows there's a lot of files. So it's a, it's a great use for that space. It is conditioned, so there there isn't really a huge concern with that. I I know there was a lot of people talking about moisture and everything else, but. The the that basement is as well conditioned as any other space in the in the town hall. It's not to hospital standards, but it's certainly, it it's good space. I'd I'd put my office down there. And then, so moving on, what we can do. Um, this isn't really set in stone, but what this is gonna open up. We'll see further down, the COA is gonna leave the basement. But we we, it opens up some flex space in what was the COA office. And we can put um, cemetery commission and recreation. Recreation doesn't really have an office, they've never had one. So that'll give them some space. And certainly cemetery, cemetery was down at my place on, at the DPW, but the, we really don't have space for them here. And then, if you want to scroll down again, of course, the main level stays pretty much the same. And then our intent right now, unless, you know, something changes in the future, COA goes up to what was vacated by. The building department basically leaving, not building department, but land use. Departments leaving upstairs, the COA gets a much bigger space upstairs. Originally, we were, when we looked at this about a year ago. Right in the midst of COVID, we were trying to accommodate, you know, what was at the time COVID restrictions. You know, glass barriers everywhere. We're kind of beyond that, we've we. We know that. You know, putting up a a six foot wall between two people really doesn't make a difference other than privacy. So we we had some plans. That we were working on. A lot, a lot has changed since then, both in COVID and at this point right now. What we're finding out is if we were to order a lot of equipment or anything else, we. We're kind of kidding ourselves, thinking we're gonna get anything in, so. What I'm gonna suggest is that we we basically just. Try to approve a plan of of where people are moving. Don't get hung up in the weeds of where each person's desk is gonna be, or what equipment we're gonna buy. We 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 own enough. Desks and fixtures to move people and get them where they need to be, if we choose where that should be. And um. I I think we're gonna realize the best use of the space as we try to use it. There, the only thing I I'm planning on making now, if this plan goes through, is a long counter. Um, as you walk in that that door, there's a glass wall there that separates. The office from basically the hall in front of the elevator. As you walk through the door, you need to have something that stops you from just meandering into the office. That's an issue we had. Upstairs, we have it in both offices upstairs, the finance department has that issue. And the land use has that issue and and that's been highlighted for quite a while. You can't just allow the public to just walk into an office. And obviously, a land use office needs a law, a counter to look at plans. Um, that's also where we will store the plans. Because what we had drawn out was was a a long, long counter. So that multiple people can stand there and be serviced by whomever they're meeting with. And the plan files that are right now stuffed over by the vault in the basement can can be stored under that counter. And then. Beyond that, there will be a small area where people can sit at a desk and either meet with someone from border health or meet with someone from conservation. And review some plans. That are that are stored there, because that happens actually. Quite a bit. So that would be something custom built, but as far as buying cubicles or anything else, I'm not, I'm not proposing we do that tonight. I'm proposing that we we kind of fix on a plan and come up with a plan to just. Start moving people. The 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 storage room also, I should mention, we had been looking at, and of course, right now isn't really the best time to buy it, but um. The ideal use of that space would be built in rolling storage, much like what we built in the vault. You can gain about sixty percent more storage by by using those rather than file cabinets. So that that would. That would house all of the border health. Files without losing any. Currently, I don't think all the file cabinets the border health has will fit in that room. Because you lose a lot of space when you take a square room and stuff a bunch of file cabinets in it. But but we have enough room down there to store all, to get everything down there, but. Ideally, we would, we would buy those others and everyone would recognize those from doctors' offices. Or even some lawyers' offices have them as well, because you get much more storage on them.
Alright, um, are you ready for questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, let me start with just a couple little, well, I'll I'll take it from the board. I have a couple of questions, I bet you someone will ask the same things to me, so. Um, and just, you know, you're all like really small on my screen, so I I do at this case like the virtual hands up, but if I, if you wave real broadly, I can see you.
You can actually, you can probably stop sharing now, Marian. You can probably stop sharing to make it, yeah, I think we got the. Yep.
I see Paul definitely waving his hand.
Yeah, I was gonna ask whether this is the first time this has been presented. Uh, publicly like this, or. Put it another way, for all these people that are moving, have, do, do they, have they been consulted? Are they aware? In other words, you mentioned the border health, has the border health been? Involved in this at all, or we're just finding, are they finding this out at the same time? The public is?
Uh, no, they've been involved. I mean, we spoke with them. Probably a year ago. And then we kind of pulled back on that plan, and I know Jeff has. Has spoken with them and taken them down. We spoke with Concom a while ago. A- again, it's it's kind of the cart before the horse to to have a bunch of committees decide where they want to be when the, you know, the select board owns the building. Um, I I. I would say there's there's buy-in there. But. We haven't sat down, it it, you know, it's it's hard to grab four different groups together and and get them all in a room and talk to them. With with people working remotely.
They they're certainly aware of conceptually of the plan. And 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 one of the things, a couple of things I would say is, because I've been talking to Darryl and. Some of the people about it for at least a year is that this space will be roughly triple the space they have now, or maybe three and a half times, because they're really cramped. If you've been updating that. Traipses over everything to get back to, you know, find Ellen in the corner there, so they're very, very cramped. So they're getting triple the space, they're having the wall there, so the contractors, so no one can walk into their office, they gotta come to a counter, it's gonna be huge. So um, Chris Owens on, he can speak tonight if he wants. He reached out to me this week and I, you know, we definitely need all of their input in how to implement it. So they're not on board in terms of. The details, because we don't have them yet. We'll incorporate their input to create the proper details, but um. You know, Darryl and Chris are both here, and I think Neil is also, so they can certainly um. Chime in.
So I've, I do have a question though, before I I take it from uh, from outside the board, is um, how about sustainability coordinator? Um, where is that located?
She was included in in going downstairs.
Okay, okay, because I know obviously that's the only point, planning board obviously has redundant staff there and what have you. My only um, my only first instinct, I think, a little bit, kind of Seaway has been talked about moving around a bunch of different locations. Um, would you consider putting a wreck and cemetery up with COA, because they're kind of part-time offices, to be honest with you? And I won't take up to a space that gives a little bit more room downstairs for the um, for the land use. That's my only initial thought as I as I look at this.
I guess the only thing I would say is remember, we also also authorize exploring lease options for the COA, so I think maybe that. Is part of the details to be worked out.
And that that's kind of one of one of the things I'm thinking of, that you could find that left side completely empty. Maybe you put the something, something else up there and then the. And then, because right now it seems like, you know, recreation and cemetery are kind of like, you know, a little, whatever you call them, the little. Places for a home, and they're also part-time, they could share with COA, I think, pretty easily. And then you had to give you a little bit more room to make the basement nothing but land use, in particular, if that includes a sustainability coordinator, then it's actually. You do have quite a few desks and it just, it feels to me, without looking at a floor plan, that this might feel a fit better, but just a consideration.
The only thing I'll say to that is, and Susan here, she can speak too, is that. One of the things the COA really needs is not just space for themselves, but some kind of private space where they can counsel people on financial issues or other issues, so they need.
Yeah.
Probably needs to be a uh, a a a conference, small conference room with a door, so that they have. Space, consulting space when um, seniors come in and need advice on. What could be personal or confidential issue, so it would probably have to be reconfigured on the second floor a little bit for them.
Yeah, I I think that's really important. I, we we have no privacy and we do discuss a lot of uh. Personal information, health information, so we definitely um. And we do need a little bit more space just for the three of us, and we have people that come into the office a lot.
Alright, I do want to take people though, as um, the people who have been raising their hands virtually, just to take them in order as appropriate. Um, I'll do Darryl and then George. Uh, yeah, Darryl, go ahead, are.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to. The plans sound great, we have known about it. Uh, have talked about it. The only thing I'd ask is that when it gets closer to laying out the space. I think talking to the land use group as a whole to think about workflow, because they've worked together for many years, they have a sense of. The ebbs and flows of things about the need for desks where plans could be spread out and people sit around and talk about it periodically and just. Just those dynamics are not things that I can answer from my limited number of hours in that office, but I think they would. That would be important for them. Um, there's some concern that. If there's kind of a rush to set up with the thought that you'll change it later. That'll just, no one will have the appetite for that. After they're installed and busy working away. So that's it.
Okay.
Eric, can I respond to that?
Well, okay, okay, yeah, go ahead. And then, now I do want to recognize George, because really.
I just want to briefly mention that I I I completely agree with that, and that's why I'm asking. Tonight, if we just, if we focus on who's going where in general. Because I I really don't think during a meeting. The select board needs to be involved with exactly where a table goes, where where the chairs are. Um, the, even the workflow, I I think the best thing would be going forward if we had. A definitive answer, okay, these people are going to this area, and then it's a lot easier for me to work with that entire group. To come up with, you know, the next phase. And and even the phase after that, if it has to be phased in. But and and that's all.
Alright, George, go ahead.
Sean pretty much just said what I was gonna suggest. I was gonna say, but I think we need to, our job is to look at the big picture, say, these are the spaces, let Sean work with those individual groups. But I think the delay has been that we've waited to get feedback from everybody, and I think if we put a direction in place, then Sean can run with it. I think that there's been a lot of spinning wheels because. There's, it's been up in the air, so I think if we say, if we have a directive to say, these are where people are going to be, then Sean can work with those individual departments with the details. And we don't need to do it in our meeting. We don't need to be in the details, that's what Sean's job is.
Alright, any other uh, questions, uh, at least amongst the board or the general public?
Yeah, I agree with everything George said. The only caveat is, you know, also I didn't push too hard, because we were building a Pine Hill Access Road and fixing a blowout on Route sixteen. So um, I sort of wasn't leaning on it too hard, because there's a lot of things that we've accomplished and we should be proud of.
Yeah.
Good. Alright, so I guess, is it, there's no vote needed in this, I believe. Uh, is there anything needed from the select board?
Sean, do you want us to vote on this, or do you?
Um. I I don't know, I. If you don't think you need a vote, then fine, I mean, you're giving me a directive to to get ready to move people, I I I think, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Well, it sounds like if I could, I think we should have some kind of vote, because Sean needs some guidance. I think what he's asking for is. A vote that's not focused on the details, but on sort of the big picture. And really, the big picture is, should we move the land use? Group. Down to the. Bottom. Floor, in part because of the weight of the files, the amount of files, the the need for more space. With coordination that's necessary with that group. It's, it sounds very logical, so I, based on his recommendation, I'm leaning. To vote yes on that. And if the rest of the board agrees with that, then he would then be able to go forward. To the next phase of this and get down to more specifics with various groups, but if we take no vote. Then we've given him no leadership at all on this, and we're not saying whether we agree or we we don't agree. I was only hesitating because I didn't know whether the other boards and committees has had a chance to. To weigh in on this, but based on what Darryl has said and Jeff has said, it sounds like there's been coordination already. Amongst the other boards and committees in town, so why not have a. At least a preliminary vote at this point.
Yeah, okay, then I'll move that we that we direct Sean to move forward with the plan as presented tonight.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I'll see, uh, no more discussion. Any question, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George? I'm also I, okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Addie May.
Okay, so moving on to uh, routine business. Are there any um, select board reports?
Well, I was gonna do a quick update. Um, I don't know, I forget what I told you before, but Alex Capillion had submitted an Eagle project to redo the. Trail around Ward Park's pond by the tennis courts and. He 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 didn't probably have enough detail, so it was rejected by the Boy Scout Council, believe it or not, but. Um, as you probably saw, we uh, we reined in the troops and uh, we I drafted the select. Um, as you probably saw, we, uh, we reined in the troops and, uh, we, I drafted the select board letter that we signed. And he redid his proposal and it was approved last week, so now he has an approved, approved project to, um. And he added a little bit more work. He's gonna add a sign, which I kind of thought would be important to explain, uh, the biography of, of Ward Parks because. I forget the years, but he was a, I think, what was he, Paul, a select board member or a town administrator for like, I forget, thirty-five years or something like that is.
Before my time.
Yeah, I know, it was, you took over for him, I don't know, but he was.
You don't get to say that very often, Paul.
Yeah. So, so long story short, it's a good news story. They told him when it was rejected not to submit this again because it, they didn't think it was a good enough project. But he didn't listen and we worked with him. Uh, Terry Shanahan is on my troop committee and she works very closely with the boys and. We coached him and counseled him and he passed with flying colors last week.
Right.
So it's really exciting.
I need to add to that actually, uh, that the, uh, that the project is also supported by Sherburne Forest and Trail. Helping through the regulatory steps and Forest and Trail, uh, is going to purchase a sign that he's going to. Basically. Uh, it it it's actually a temporary sign that'll just say Ward Parks Pond Trail. The larger sign, we agreed, is a separate project. It would be a kiosk or. Something with history, but that's not part of his Eagle Eagle Scout project. But it's a very good project.
And and he reviewed it also with, he reviewed it with Concom also because it's right by the pond. Anyway, that was just quick update, upbeat update.
Um, any other select board reports?
I have a little update from the COVID, uh, the COVID nineteen team. Uh, that, uh, met, I think, uh, has been meeting and Jeff is usually there. Jeff, you weren't there this morning, which is not very unusual. You're usually absolutely there.
I took a new job in the U K, Marion.
Oh, that's right, your job, you have a job. Anyway, uh, this morning, um. Uh, the Chair of the Dover Board of Health shared a spreadsheet, it's just a table of. The pattern of COVID incidents in Sherburne and Dover, and I think it's worth taking a look at. Uh, and Daryl's here, she can speak to it, but, uh, can I share my screen?
Yeah, sure, I have it too. It's a good table. I did review the table even though I wasn't there.
Right, uh. I'll just open it up and then share my screen. You can hang on for one second. Share a screen. Okay, here we are. Uh, you can probably see that this is kind of a two-week average incidence rate, that is. Incidences, new infections over the past two weeks, that's what it means. And, uh. You can, you want me to zoom that in or can you see it? Okay.
Good to see it.
That's good.
So, uh, it, what struck me is back in June. And, uh, all the way really pretty much through June. We were getting zero new cases of COVID, which is why we relaxed a little bit, basically. And then, of course, the Delta variant came along. And people relaxed and you can kind of see the trend right up to the present, actually, the last. Data is from the, uh, twenty-fifth of September, so it's not exactly up to date. But, uh, the, the first column is Dover, Sherburne, and then it breaks it down between Dover and Sherburne. And you can compare it to columns of three and four are Norfolk. Which is Dover's in and Middlesex that Sherburne's in and then Massachusetts as a whole. And you can see that, uh. Even though we have generally had the feeling that we're better off than most. Because, you know, we have all these trails, we have lots of room, we don't crowd that that much. But in fact, in terms of numbers, we're, we're really not. And I think it's worth just reminding, uh, ourselves that, uh. We, we have a, a problem here in Sherburne. The parallel is pretty much that in the state and surrounding communities, so we're not special. And we just have to keep being vigilant. That's the take-home message. Daryl, you might want to add something to that. Or not.
He might not be our.
You pretty much captured, um, it. Right, for a while, even though people would often refer to Sherborne as being in a. Safe bubble, we were worse than the state average for a while there, so. Uh, these are just the things that we're concerned about. Certainly, that was some of the impetus for, um. Measures that. Board of Health was working on prior to school starting because, again, our focus right now, given the vaccination. Incidents in town that we're focusing on the kids and keeping them at school, so. And it's great that through September, our numbers started dropping down again.
Right. Okay, that's that.
I just had a quick question on that, Marion or Daryl. It was on the, um, I know. When when was opening, I was on a school board meeting and I think it was mentioned that. At the Dover Sher, at the region, is it like a ninety-five percent vaccination rate or something that high? Uh, which is great, and I'm hoping that even though we have an uptick in cases. I'm hoping that means we have, because of such a high vaccination rate, we have a lot less hospitalizations, a lot less serious illness.
I think that vaccination rate, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Daryl, but I believe that refers to people sixty-five and over.
No, I think it's ninety-five percent, school population, I think it's that high, but of course not, not chattering in Pine Hill because the.
Right, 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 because none of those kids are old enough yet, so.
That's right.
At the region, ninety-five percent of eligible students, I think, were.
Oh, that is great, yeah.
I believe that that number is right.
That's great. Uh, you know, data from Israel is showing we're there now in the same phase we are in terms of vaccine, really. Uh, there, you know, people are getting boosters. They still don't have the vaccines for, uh, kids between five and twelve, just like us. Um, but they are seeing that even though kids from five to twelve don't tend to get. A, a disease that you would recognize necessarily as COVID, they they do get infected. And, uh, you know, they have very mild or no symptoms and, uh, they they carry it home, so. Uh, one of the reasons that they're discovering all these infections among kids in Israel that are in school, just pretty much like us. Is that, uh, they have, they're testing all the time. They have this incredibly high testing rate. So. Yeah, that's just to say that, uh, we're really looking forward to getting the kids vaccinated as soon as they can.
Well, is there any data on the age groups where these cases are being presented? Is it, is it the young kids that aren't vaccinated? Is that, is there a higher incidence with them?
It's, it's basically, uh, the. Actually, in Israel, it was about half vaccinated and half not vaccinated. Of the vaccinated people who got COVID, they tended, uh, not to get very ill. They tested positive, so they are counted as a COVID. Case. Uh, but just like here, the unvaccinated are the ones that are going to hospital and having severe disease. And, uh. There's a, a new study just starting. At the NIH where they're going to be following at least forty thousand people in this country. To follow the long COVID, the the symptoms that go on and on even after you've had COVID. And those long-term symptoms are affecting both vaccinated and unvaccinated people. Both mild and severe disease, not to the same extent, but. In, in Israel, the, the main. Group that's now, uh, getting infected and sick are the. Really, the, the. The teen to forty years old. It's the the whole younger cohort that's. I guess maybe not taking the same precautions.
Well, and I would add, Marion, one, one reason for continued masking is because vaccinated people can still transmit the disease. So even if they aren't likely to get. Uh, seriously ill and maybe not even get symptomatic. Incidents of COVID, they could still be transmitted to people who are not vaccinated.
That's right, because the immune system, if you're vaccinated, uh, you don't necessarily have all the antibodies right where they need to be. When the virus gets into your nose, so it takes a, a day or so. Maybe two days for the immune system to focus on the site of infection. And during that time, you can be harboring virus in your nose.
And George, if you were asking about Sherborne cases. So that detail of exactly how many in what age ranges is not what the Board of Health members know. But from the public health nurse, I could say that. The cases have ranged from infants. Up to seniors. But I actually think that, and distributed across all the age groups, I think, with nothing, no group standing out in particular.
Okay, okay, very good. Um, any other questions on that? Okay. Um, any other select board reports? So I do have a select board reporter, at least a, I got a call question I just wanted to bring up. The governor a few weeks ago proposed actually a bill before, it's right before the House right now for spending of state ARPA funds. Um, it's just a few pages, it's four pages long. It's very vague and broad brush about, you know, economic development, workforce development. Infrastructure, um, investment, so on and so forth. Um, but what stands out to me, also one, I'd like, you know, at least, uh, David to look at it and anyone else applicable to see if there's anything that. Would fit within the town. There's no earmarks in this, but what it feels like is that they're allocating large sums of money, for example, um. What is it, four hundred million to fund water sewer infrastructure and three hundred million for COVID standards, environmental infrastructure. If this is gonna be done like the era funds, which I'm quite certain it is, it's gonna use existing grant mechanisms. And so I know, for example, I'd like, at least like David and maybe Sean and Gino to look at work that we're planning on doing. And seeing if it can fit within existing grant mechanism. I know in the last two years, I think we've blown out two culverts in town. And I think there's a certain vulnerability in that. Culvert's one of those things that we joke back in my job saying you never know what's there until you know what's there. And, um, three hundred million dollars is gonna be going into it, and I'm sure that's gonna be using the Mast D O T, um. Uh, culvert mechanism, the Mast D O T has one as well as, um, what is it, the Division of Economic Sustainability, when you make them, um. Wide enough, whatever it is. And I'm sure the, um, four hundred million for water sewer is gonna go to SRF, and I was thinking about Leland Farms and Woodhaven and some other work they're doing there. No, normally SRF is nothing but a low, low, um, low interest loan unless you're in EJ community. But when the era funds went in, it went for loan relief, so they were funding back then up to like twenty percent of of the, um, of a project. And here, it wouldn't surprise me frankly, even more, because I think four hundred million is pretty fair for Massachusetts SRF, so. I guess this is a broad question to, um, Sean, David and Gino, if you want to get together with me or something and start looking at some of the projects we have and the timeframes of these grant mechanisms. They were accelerated during the era time, it wouldn't surprise me if they, you know, I know some people at SRF, if, if, um. If we make some calls and see what, you know, if they're modifying their deadlines, that's all. Okay. If anyone, I'll actually, I'll send this, um, bill, um, this House bill to David, he can distribute it, um, among the board. Yeah, Marion?
Yeah, it it just brings me back to the first thing on our agenda, which was the use of the ARPA funds. And at the bottom of the page, we didn't kind of get there, but there was a list of possible future requests. And, um, I thought, you know, uh, we, I don't mean to, uh, discuss any of those, you know, some of them, I think are fine, but. It seemed to me not very ambitious and I thought it would be, uh. I'd like to hear more kind of. Big thinking about how those funds might be used in the next few years and, uh, I don't mean to open the discussion again, but.
Well, there's kind of two, so there's, the towns allocate a certain amount of, uh, uh, ARPA funds, whatever it is, some lump sum. And we just have to apply and say this project is applicable to it and so on like that. What I'm talking about is a state fund, so the state has its own ARPA funds. And it's using grant, I believe it's using, and the governor's proposing a bill of what goes where, which I think, uh, you know, David can distribute. And since I mentioned this meeting, maybe I can distribute it, I can show it on screen, but it's a very short, four-page bill, Broadbush. Two hundred million of this, three hundred million of that, 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 no earmarks, nothing. I just am very, very confident, given what they, um, you know, they did with the Obama era funds, that they can use existing grant mechanisms. And there's certain things in here, which I think are very applicable to Sherburne and work that we're doing anyway. I would like to position ourselves into those grant mechanisms because you can always pull out. But I'd like to start the application process for a few of those, be it for culverts or maybe, um, Leland Woodhaven, uh, water or something like that. One, and when they did the era funds, because. Water SRF is traditionally less funded than the wastewater and they got equal amounts of money, had much better rate relief. Had I like three times the rate relief than the, than the sewer, um, infrastructure had back then, so. Just something, something to think about, and I'd like a further discussion with, um, whoever's applicable in town. Okay. Um, sorry. No further ado, um, as Chair, I declare that an executive session is warranted for the, um, agenda items as previously read. By the town administrator. I guess before we officially go into executive session, does anyone know? For the first one, Hunting Lane, is council come, is council attending this meeting?
Michael Terry's here.
Okay, then we'll, we'll keep him in order. If he, if he wasn't, then I was gonna take him out of order because I know we have people attending for item number two.
Yeah, and we have library people too, I think, so anyone that, we'll put you in the waiting room if you're waiting for items two, three or four, we'll get to you.
And stopped according to as well, Jeff.
Yep.